And so I'd like to call the Select Board meeting to order. The date is November 9, 2021. The time is 7:00 PM. This meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, temporarily amending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the Open Meeting Law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Is there anyone else recording?
Yes, this is Thomas Taylor. I'd like to record.
Okay, do you mind giving us your, your address, please?
34 East Street.
Great, thank you. Is there anyone else? Seeing none, I will note for the record that the members of the Select Board participating this evening are Liz Klein, Bill Ramsey, and myself, Joe Fisher. And Mr. Taylor, if you can put your raised hand down because you've already been recognized.
I have one thing further to say. It says that you need to give me permission to record. So I think there's some setting on your Zoom screen that allows me to do that. Or allows you to do that.
So Heidi or Tom, I am not familiar with that requirement.
I am not either. We are recording it. If Mr. Taylor is looking to record it beyond our recording of built into Zoom, then that's the methodology for doing that is up to him.
How would I get a recording from the town?
We can make it available. It's a public record. We can make it available after the meeting.
So public records request?
Yeah, just call the office.
I don't think you need to go through that formality. If you contact the Select Board Office, we'll get you a copy.
Wonderful, thank you.
Um, one more thing. I just made Mr. Taylor a co-host that may make it give him the ability to record.
Yeah, I think the recording is being done regardless of who is prompted it. And we'll just, Mr. Taylor, if you send me an email tomorrow, I'm happy to send you a link to it.
Wonderful, thank you. Very great, thanks.
Just one second here. Okay. This has been the longest introduction I think we've had in a while before getting the first item on the agenda. So moving on. I, we have the minutes of October 19th. I know that there were some changes that were communicated to Select Board members close to the start of this meeting. I'm prepared to move forward, but if anyone has not had a chance to review, please let me know and we can certainly defer this item to our next meeting. Bill, are you ready to move forward?
I'm comfortable moving forward.
Liz?
Yes.
Then I will accept a motion on the minutes of October 19th, 2021.
I make a motion to approve the minute stated October 19th, 2021.
Second.
Roll call vote. Bill?
Hi.
Liz?
Hi.
And Joe?
Aye.
Minutes are approved. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is to consider the request of GPI M A S B I I Inc., DBA BMW South Shore, South Shore Mini of 1040 Hingham Street for a Class 1 Auto Dealers License. And who do we have on the call to address this? Do we have Randy Ellis or Fred Shaw? We, I see Fred Shaw. And I see Randy Ellis. So if either or both of you could explain what the request is, please.
Fred, you want to take it?
Sure.
If you could identify yourselves before you begin speaking.
Absolutely. Good evening all. Fred Shaw, Director of Sales, South Shore BMW, South Shore Mini. We are looking to transfer the Class 1 License, Auto Dealers License from the Prime Motor Group over to Group One Automotive. And hopefully all the paperwork has been submitted and every T has been crossed and look to the board for any questions or if you need any feedback and what the next steps would be on, on your end.
So if you could just describe the premises. There are some of us who think this is all in Rockland, but if you could explain the portion that's in Hingham, please.
Absolutely. South Shore BMW is in Rockland. And the portion that is in Hingham is the South Shore Mini Automobile Dealership. So we're looking for a transfer of our current Class 1 License for South Shore Mini with the Town of Hingham to be transferred again from the Prime Motor Group over to Group One Automotive.
Should we, should Hingham feel slighted that we only have the Mini and not the full lot?
Well, the good news is as you, as you may or may not know, myself, my family, we've been associated with Shaw's for decades and I've been a Hingham resident since 1968. So I'm proudly representing the Mini brand as well. So the legacy continues right here up on the hilltop.
Great. Tom, was there any review required from the Police Department on this?
Not from the Police Department. We've been through everything and they've, they've met all of our requirements.
So it doesn't look like there's any change under, other than what's been disclosed on these forums?
Right.
Bill Ramsey, any questions?
I reviewed the forums and I have no questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Liz?
I've also reviewed the forums and have no questions.
Are there any members of the public who have comments or questions on this item on our agenda? Seeing none, I am prepared to accept the motion on this.
I will make the motion. I guess, I just want to confirm that these are the right business names because it's not exactly what I think Mr. Shaw said. So I'll, I'll try to make the motion and we'll go from there. So I'll make him. Sorry?
Go ahead, go ahead. I'll help on this one.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the application for the transfer of the Class 1 Auto Dealers License from AMR Auto Holdings, M I N R LLC, doing business as South Shore Mini, 1040 Hingham Street, to GPI M A dash S B I I Inc., doing business as South Shore Mini, 1040 Hingham Street, in accordance with the Class 1 Auto Dealers License application filed with the Town of Hingham on October 27, 2021.
Sounds great.
There are second?
Second.
We do a roll call vote. Bill Ramsey?
Aye.
Liz Klein?
Aye.
And Joe Fisher?
Aye.
It is approved. Thank you. We appreciate your, your, your activities in Hingham. Next on the agenda is to consider the request of Packaging Center Inc., doing business as Stop &amp; Shop at 400 Lincoln Street, Hingham for a change of officers, directors, LLC managers. And is Margaret on the line?
I'm not sure, Margaret, but I, this is Gene Richard. I'm the attorney for Packaging Centering.
Great. So if you could walk us through what is involved?
Yes, thank you. There, we're seeking approval of, of change of officers and directors. There is no change in ownership. There will be no change in the operations that I think would be visible to customers. This is basically corporate housekeeping. But specifically, Jeff DeShell is becoming Treasurer, Secretary, and a Director of the Corporate Licensee. He's replacing Mark Messier as Treasurer and Secretary and Gordon Reed as Director. A gentleman named Dean Wilkinson is becoming a Director. He's replacing Stacy Wiggins. And, and then Maria Silvestri is no longer listed.
No, she's not.
Will no longer be listed as Assistant Secretary.
So we have, I guess on the application to propose, propose officers, there are four listed, I believe, Gordon Reed, Robert Jaeger, Jeffrey Michael DeShell, and Dean Wilkinson. Is that correct?
No, the, the proposed slate is Gordon Reed as President.
Right.
Pardon?
That, that's what I'm seeing.
Okay, the proposed slate, Gordon Reed as President, the Treasurer and Secretary is Jeff DeShell. And Maria Silvestri is being dropped off. Then the Directors are Robert Jaeger, Dean Wilkinson, Jeff DeShell.
So right, right, got it. So he's, he is both, Jeff is both a Director as well as the Treasurer Secretary.
That's correct.
Got it. And it looks as if you've done the Corey forms for all of the relevant officers and directors. Is that correct?
Yes.
Tom, this would be something I believe the Police Department reviews?
Everything has gone through, Dave Jones has looked at everything and everything is good.
Great. And I also have reviewed the, the documents. Liz Klein, any questions?
No questions. I also reviewed the package. Thank you.
Bill Ramsey?
I have no questions. Thank you.
Are there any members of the public who have comments or questions on this application? Seeing none, I am prepared to take a motion on this.
I make a motion to approve the request of Packaging Center Incorporated, doing business as Stop &amp; Shop 400 Lincoln Street, Hingham, Massachusetts, for a change of officers, directors, LLC managers in accordance with the application for a change of officers, directors, LLC managers filed with the Town of Hingham on October 21st, 2021, subject to the approval of the Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz Klein?
Aye.
Bill Ramsey?
Aye.
Joe Fisher?
Aye.
It is approved. Gene, thank you for your explanation. Very helpful.
Thank you, sir.
Now we move on to, to the salt of our, of our agenda here. Next item is to consider the approval of the agreement with Eastern Minerals Inc. to supply the town with CC rock salt or solar salt. Is Randy Sylvester or Kathy here?
Yes.
I see Kathy and I see Randy. So please explain to us what is being asked.
So this is the yearly salt bid that we go out and this is the contract. This is the, we bid it through the Medfield, Town of Medfield Consortium. And every year they go out to bid and Eastern Minerals has won it at $65 a ton for the snow removal budget.
And what is the aggregate amount of the contract for Eastern Minerals?
$300,000.
And could you tell me, just how does that compare to what our prior contracts have been and also what our prior usage has been?
So our prior contracts, we have yearly, we've done 300,000. Our yearly contracts before in 18 was $45 a ton. 2019, $48 a ton. Last year it was $43 a ton. But with COVID and whatnot and everything going up, it's, it's low bid was $65 a ton. Usage, it's, it's been 300 ton per year. And we do that mainly to, to fill the salt shed and then use it as we need through the year. And it depends on the snowfall. So an average year, we use 300 ton.
Okay. So if we let me just pull up the contract. So if we've got a contract for $65 a ton and we use 300,000 tons?
So we use 3,000 ton a year.
Oh, I'm sorry, 3,000 tons, right, right, which brings, right, okay. And I'm not sure if there's a, if there's a magic answer to this, to this, but why Medfield? Why are we working with the town?
We've historically done it for the last 20 years anyway.
Yep.
They are, the surrounding towns also are in the consortium, Braintree, Waymouth and whatnot. So they do, do a good job and they have come back with the lowest prices. So we've stuck with them.
So we're, we're taking advantage of bulk purchase. Is that a fair statement?
Absolutely.
And if we were to use 3,000 tons at $65 a ton, so we would be a little bit under $200,000. So your $300,000 gives us a safety cushion. Is that a fair statement?
Okay, yes, it's, it's hard to tell what you're going to get for the winter.
Yep, yep. And is this delivered all at once or over a period of time or how does our acquisition?
Hundred yard trailers. It's, it's throughout the year.
Okay.
So we'll, we have about a quart of a salt shed left. Now we will fill that once this contract is fulfilled. And then we will move forward from there. Storm by storm, basically.
Great. And my assumption is that salt is homogenous, like there's no real difference in quality from one place to the other. So it's, it's, it makes sense to go with, with the low bidder. Is that?
Basically.
Okay, great. Bill Ramsey, questions?
Sure. Randy, am I right that the salt that we don't use, we can keep it and use it to next year if necessary?
Absolutely. That's what we have the salt shed for. It holds, I think it's 6,400 ton. So we fill that up every year and we work off that. And then if we get into a situation, we order more.
Okay. You know, one of the things I was learned last year being on the board was a major snowfall event in the Town of Hingham cost us about $250,000 to $300,000 as a cleanup. So it's a major initiative and it's always good to be ready. The last two winters, we've been pretty lucky with mild, milder winters and not a lot of snowfall, but you never know. So thanks for doing this, Randy, and getting ready for the weather.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Liz Klein?
Yes, thank you, Randy. Is it correct that the, the $300,000 is already budgeted?
Yes.
FY '22, okay.
Yep.
And in terms of the supply issues, do you think there's going to be trouble getting the salt?
It doesn't look that way now, but we do. We will be going to a secondary, a backup salt contract. And we do that just because if they do, they have run out from time to time. And I know there's other towns that we have supplied and they've paid us back, but we would like a backup supplier also.
Great, okay. Thank you.
Kathy, did you have anything you wanted to add on the contract?
No, I don't think so. I I think Randy covered it all.
Great, thank you. I see Mr. Taylor has his hand raised.
Yes, shouldn't this be put out for competitive bid every year rather than accepting the same company for the last 20 years?
It was bid every, it is bid every year. That's what Randy was referring to is that each year, a consortium of 29 towns through the, through the person in Medfield who's responsible for purchasing. Medfield leads it and they put it out to bid. And they did that in appropriate manner this year and got the prices back. And then they, Medfield Select Board approves the recommendation for themselves. And then the towns, what we're doing right now is to take advantage of it. We were included in the language in the bid in the first place. And we have a contract now to, for just this fiscal year, just the 21-22 season.
Thank you.
So if I can just follow up on Mr. Taylor's questions, has it, has the lowest bidder always been Eastern Minerals every year?
Recently it has been, but there has been others that have been lower.
Yep, yeah, that's, that's my recollection.
In the past.
Yeah. And so we have in our record, the certification from the Town of Medfield Board of Selectmen. And they reported the bidding process and they reported that the lowest bids, the lowest bid price was in fact provided by Eastern Minerals at the $65 per ton. So that competitive bid process did happen. Are there any other members of the public with comments or questions? Seeing and hearing none, I'm prepared to accept the motion on this.
I will make a motion to authorize the Town Administrator to sign the agreement with Eastern Minerals Inc. to supply the town with CC rock salt or solar salt in an amount not to exceed $300,000.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz Klein?
Aye.
Bill Ramsey?
Aye.
And Joe Fisher?
Aye.
That contract is approved. We move on to the next contract concerning Morton Salt. And that's to consider approval of an agreement with Morton Salt to supply the town with CC rock salt. So Randy, could you explain why we have a second contract?
So we have a second contract if the, the primary supplier cannot supply us salt, we, we actually need it during the winter. We, we like to have a secondary contract with another salt company in case they can't provide, in case the first bidder, the primary bidder can't supply the salt. Since we do need it during the winter months.
And would you explain the pricing with the backup? Because I note that it is higher than the primary contract, but it also went through a competitive bid process?
Yes, it's the same bid process. It's the second highest bidder. It was bid out at $80 a ton. And we would like it as the $300,000 also in order to cover that first bid, just in, just in case that first bidder cannot provide any salt. We'd like to have a contract in place. We don't have to use it, but it would be good to have as a backup.
Right. And so that price is $80.89 per ton, I believe.
Yes, 80, 89 delivered, yeah.
Right.
It's $80 a ton picked up.
And there's also, I just noticed that the Medfield Selectmen identified three types of salt. There's the rock salt, the solar salt, and the treated salt. Which ones are we getting?
We will be getting the solar or rock salt. That's virtually the same one. This will be the, rock salt we'll be getting.
Yep.
We will not get the treated salt that they treat it with chemicals for, for ice removal.
Right.
Loads. It's very expensive.
And, and I understand the reason for a, a backup. But just looking at the primary contract. So isn't the supplier obliged to provide us? What would be the circumstances that we, we would need the backup? Because we, we now have a contract. I'm sorry, go ahead.
We're going to have 23 towns and the assumption is, and we've never had a problem, but other towns have. Because we have the supply. We have a salt shed. We can, we can fill the salt shed at the beginning of the season and have a good supply backup. As the winter progresses and there's more need for salt, they get low on salt and they have to have barges come in and deliver it.
Right.
If, if, if there's any reason we can't get salt, I would like to have a backup to take care of the Town of Hingham. That's what I'm most concerned about.
Yeah, and that makes sense. You know, and you know.
Joe, there isn't.
Go ahead, go ahead, please.
It doesn't happen very often, but I can tell you with the state in 2015, if everyone remembers the snow in 2015, there was a huge problem with getting salt all over the place. And people were, towns were driving to the places to try to pick them up and really, so something like that where it just snowed and snowed and snowed. That became a salt issue across the state. But generally speaking, and it sounds like Hingham has a really big salt shed too. So that's a good thing.
Got it. Any, any questions from the Select Board? Liz Klein?
I think it makes sense to have the, the backup. So thank you for doing that. And there's no minimum commitment, right? We're only, this is just a fixed price. If we need it, right?
We only pay for what we use.
Okay, great, thank you.
Bill Ramsey?
I think you answered this, Randy, but let me just clarify. Have we ever had to use the backup contract?
Periodically we have used it, yes.
Thank you.
No, it's, it's definitely prudent to have that in reserve. Any member of the public have a question on this? Mr. Taylor?
Yes, having a backup sounds like a good idea. I'm wondering though, the primary contract is with the consortium, but a secondary is strictly Hingham dealing with Morton Salt. I'm wondering why we don't route this all through the primary contract, have a penalty clause, and have them get the salt from Morton Salt. Thank you.
Morton is also part of the consortium. As Randy said, they were the second lowest bidder. So Randy chose to, to use them only as a backup. But it gave, there were two bidders. Cargill was the third bidder, but they put in no bid, if I recall, for all three of the types of salt. So the competition was not robust in the sense of multiple vendors. You know, you can put clauses in, in contracts, but like I just referred to on, on the winter of 2015, when you, when they don't have salt, when the barges aren't coming into the ports, those kinds of things, it doesn't matter. You know, Eastern Minerals will say, you know, I can't get anything, something I don't have, that kind of thing. And so it's always good to diversify that way in case something like that happens, because it certainly has, you know, where the, the ports weren't available. The salt wasn't coming from upstate New York because the trains were frozen and it really was a mess that year. And thankfully, that's an unusual one, but I think be clear that they were part of the consortium. And these are two separate contracts based on the procurement, competitive procurement that the consortium conducted.
Well, thank you for that explanation. I'm wondering though, the Morton Salt contract, is that through the consortium or is that us individually?
It's also.
I'm wondering about the asymmetry.
There is no, there is no asymmetry. Both contracts are through the consortium.
Thank you.
Anyone else have a question? Seeing none, I will accept the motion and I would request that who makes the motion also include language saying in amount not to exceed 300,000 for the Morton Salt contract.
And make a motion to authorize a Town Administrator to sign the agreement with Morton Salt Inc. to supply the town with CC rock salt at a rate of $80.89 per ton delivered not to exceed $300,000?
Yes, yes.
Second.
Motion's been moved and seconded. Roll call vote. Liz Klein?
Aye.
Bill Ramsey?
Aye.
And Joe Fisher?
Aye.
That's approved. Randy and Kathy, thank you for the explanation and fielding our questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is to consider appointments for the Town of Hingham. And Mr. Ramsey, do you have a nomination you'd like to make? Mr. Ramsey, do you have a nomination you'd like to make?
I do. I'd make a motion to appoint Mary Bell to the Cultural Council for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2024.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Bill Ramsey, how do you vote?
Hi.
Liz Klein.
Hi.
And Joe Fisher. I. That appointment is approved. Thank you.
Joe, if I could just add one thing, I see Mary on the call. I would note that, um, I've known Mary and her family literally my entire life and I know she'll do a great job, so.
Oh, there she, I didn't, I'm sorry, I did not see you on the, on, on the call. Thanks for waving and thanks for, uh, your willingness to serve the town. We do, we do appreciate it.
Thank you, Mary. Patty Coyle is on from the Chair of the Cultural Council as well.
Great.
Thank you both.
I see two dogs. I don't see Patty on this. Next item for us is to accept comments from the public on items not on the agenda. Are there members of the public who have comments on items within the board's jurisdiction that are not on the agenda this evening? Seeing none, we move to Town Administrator and Select Board Reports, beginning with Mr. Tom Mayo.
Uh, did you want to do a COVID report?
Uh, I'm, I'm sorry. You're right. I skipped over that. Um, let's go backtrack and we should do the COVID-19 update, please.
Well, one of these days we won't have to do these.
That would be, that would be.
Would be great, right? Um, so thank you, Joe. Uh, so the COVID report for today, November 9th, uh, 2021 is as follows. So statewide, the number of new COVID-19 cases has generally been trending downward since mid-September, good news. Uh, in Hingham, new COVID-19 cases continue to hover around 30 to 40 new cases per 14-day period for the last several weeks. The vaccination rate for Hingham has risen to 74%. But if you look at only vaccine-eligible individuals in Hingham, eight people ages 12 and over, the percent of fully vaccinated eligible residents is up to 87%. And of course, that number will rise as the, um, excuse me, the overall number will rise as the, the younger, uh, children start to get vaccinated with the newest releases. So, uh, obviously children ages five to 11 have been authorized by the CDC to receive the Pfizer COVID-19 vaccine. And that was, um, effective as of November 2nd. So please contact your child's healthcare provider, uh, or search the VaxFinder, V A X Finder dot mass dot gov for vaccination appointments. COVID-19 vaccination appointments for children ages five to 11 are available at pharmacies in Waymouth, Braintree, Quincy, and Cohasset, among some other nearby towns. And there is also a state-sponsored pediatric vaccination clinic in Brockton. So for more information, uh, you should reach out to the, I head out, head out to the DPH website. That's the Department of Public Health's website. That's all, Joe.
Thank you. Now we can move, oh, I should ask, do any members of the public or members of the board have comments or questions on the COVID-19 update, starting with the board? Uh, Bill Ramsey?
Comments or questions? Thank you.
Liz Klein?
Just a quick question, Tom. Or does that mean that no pharmacies in Hingham are offering the vaccine for ages five to 11?
Yeah, so we called, we called around and we got, uh, those were, those, the pharmacies in those towns and were able to answer our question. I, I don't want to say definitively whether they are or not, but, um, through our quick research effort, it did not appear as though they, um, they were, but.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So I take it from your comment, Tom, that, uh, if a resident does want to go to a pharmacy in Hingham, they should call ahead and see, in fact, if the vaccine is available. Those, those pharmacies may not have responded today, but they may respond tomorrow. So.
Right, that's exactly.
I think that's where we're at. Um, any member of the public have questions on the COVID-19 report? Seeing none. Now, Tom, we can go to the Town Administrator Report.
Uh, none tonight. Thank you, Joe. Actually, actually, if you don't mind, I would like to do one. Um, I did have the privilege earlier this evening of, um, joining the South Shore Regional Emergency Communications Center, affectionately, affectionately locally known as the Shrek Department, which is our dispatchers, our public dispatchers for the towns of Cohasset, Norwell, Hull, and Hingham. And, uh, anyway, I was, I had the privilege of being over there during a shift change this afternoon and, um, I was able to, uh, meet and greet with the, uh, both shifts and thank them all for their efforts during that latest storm. That was a very significant event. A lot of our response times obviously start with, with the folks at the Shrek. So, um, I've reminded them of that, thanked them for their efforts and their service and, uh, and, you know, reinforce that they're important parts of the team. So just wanted to call them up.
I do not see Michelle on the, on the line. Is she?
She's not on tonight.
She is not. So I move to Art. Art Robert, do you have any, anything for this evening?
Nothing to add this evening. Thank you.
Great, thank you. I'll begin, uh, just to note that, uh, this Thursday is Veterans Day. And there will be a, uh, a ceremony and salute to our veterans as, at, as part of our, Hingham Veterans Day Observance, which we do each year. It will be at Town Hall, uh, at, starting at 11:00 AM sharp, uh, on November 11th. And so members of the public uh, are all encouraged to, uh, to attend and participate. Liz Klein?
Nothing to report tonight. Thank you.
And Bill Ramsey?
Uh, just to add to that, Joe, uh, at 8:30 on Thursday morning is the, um, uh, Corporal Lawrence St. Laurent, uh, breakfast hosted by the Veterans Council. It is a breakfast for all veterans and their families to attend. It's right at Town Hall, right across from Sanborn. Um, so, uh, veterans, I hope can, um, can make it. It's usually a really good start to the day. And then as Joe mentioned, right at 11 o'clock, we start our ceremony. So looking forward to seeing everybody there this year. Uh, it should be a great ceremony with a great speaker.
Yes. Thank you. Um, so with that, I am prepared to accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote. Bill?
Hi.
Liz?
Hi.
And Joe. I.